All right, everything appears to be in order. We are live on Zoom and live on YouTube. With that, I'll turn the floor over. Ms. Hennes is not able to join the work session. With that, the vice chair is Mr. Whitmore. I'll turn the chair or turn the floor over to Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you, Chris. As the backup, who was almost late, and I like to call this October 11th, 2023, Planning Commission Work Session Meeting to Order. We have a roll call. Commission Member Hennes is not here. Commission Member Kramer?
Here.
Mission Member Lucas. Mission Member Whitmore is here, and Commission Member Watkins is absent. And I've got a few notes to read here before we get started. In addition to citizens attending the work session in person, citizens have several options to view the Zoom meeting webinar as described below. One, to view the Rockbridge County Planning Commission Work Session via Zoom webinar. The link is available on the county website to copy into the address line on your browser. Or two, to join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password there for your convenience. Additionally, citizens can also view the work session live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Planning Commission YouTube channel, also available on the county website. While work sessions are a public meeting, both physically or via Zoom or YouTube, the purpose of work sessions is for staff and commission to discuss the issue, propose zoning text amendments. The work sessions are not an open forum, open dialogue with the public. As the process continues, both planning commission and the board of supervisors will have opportunities for public comment and involvement. At this time, we will proceed to the work session.
Yes, and this is the, I think this is the second formal work session we've had on the topic. The first one's been quite some time ago. I apologize on that. And the staff report afterward that says as time allows, we would, we would follow up accordingly. So what we have prepared for you is Mr. Meek has done some, some research on what other localities are doing, what we're seeing throughout the Commonwealth really. And so we'd like to have definitely an interaction during the slide. What I'm anticipating, I think we have a total of 10 slides or so to go through with y'all on, on several different fronts. But, but as we go through the slides, I'd like to, I'd like to have the discussion. You know, this isn't one, hold all your questions till the very end, and let's talk about it, you know, type thing. So as you know, just for, for the general public's knowledge, if you will, we currently treat solar projects that furnish electricity to the general public, I should add, as a public utility per definition. So the majority of the solar projects we've been getting are in that either agricultural transitional zone or agricultural and general use districts. Both of those districts provide for, and I should say in the agricultural district as well, agricultural limited district, all three of those make up about 71 to 72% of Rockbridge County. And all of them are, all districts provide for public utilities as a use by special exception. And that's, that's definitely consistent throughout the state. You know, we have not seen one, I'm not aware of one, I should say, that has public utilities or a defined solar field, both large and small, that, that generate electricity for the general public as a permitted use. We do allow as a permitted use in Rockbridge County in the industrial zoning district. It's very limited industrial zoning district. The majority has a public water and public sewer, so, so obviously we have not seen solar field applications, nor do we anticipate seeing solar field applications where there's public water and public sewer, just because the higher the best use of the property. With that, I'd like Mr. Meek to come up. I'm going to share my screen, and again, the, the purpose of this is just an open dialogue between the planning commission to see, to, to see what we're doing and what they would like to see y'all as the planning commission would like to see in, in the future as far as developing a formal ordinance.
Come on up, Mr. Meek.
So, so this is, let's see, this is approximately 13 slides, I believe. It goes over a wide variety of things, but the first one, the first one we have for you is setbacks. So I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Meek.
All right, setbacks are probably the most important thing, especially for all the neighbors of the solar field. For any utility, solar generation facility, it's going to be, the blank is for us to fill in. And there's been a range in other counties from about 150 to 200 feet generally. Anywhere between those from property lines. They also make sure to say that 250 feet from parcels with have the dwellings in them. Pretty much all of them have setbacks at at least 150 feet unless the board of supervisor approves a special use permit for lower ones. All structures and above ground equipment that are associated with the solar project also should be located at least 200 feet minimum from any street right of way and from all side and rear property lines and factors. They will make sure that all solar farm materials meet the minimum zoning setbacks for the most restrictive district of the property surrounding the site. But exceptions maybe made for adjoining parcels that are owned by the person who owns the solar. The board of supervisors may also reduce but not increase these setbacks requirements for a solar facility if it finds it in a public interest to do so.
So with that, you know, our setbacks, it, it really, and of course, the regular scheduled meeting, we have two solar, solar applications coming through, and there's a wide variety of setbacks pertaining to additional property lines. So with that being said, you know, want to get y'all's thoughts on, on, on the setbacks as far as away from property lines and essentially away from road right of ways. You know, our rule of thumb, you could build a primary dwelling, your primary dwelling, and these agricultural zones that we're talking about, again, A1, A2, and AT, the front setback for primary dwelling is going to be 65 feet from the edge of the road right of way, 50 foot side, 50 foot rear. That reduces with accessory structure, if you will. So if you were building, built, building, we do treat residential scale, you know, for a particular house as a residential, as a residential accessory structure pertaining to solar panels. So that, and this is obviously not per special exception, it's a by right use because it's not purging electricity to the general public, if you will. With that being said, those type of facilities or those, those type of panels would be a 65 foot front setback, and then it actually reduces to a five foot side and a five foot rear. And that's traditionally because, and I say that because the panels are under 15 feet tall. If they would exceed 15 feet tall, which we've never seen one exceed 15 feet tall, it would be increased to 20 foot side and rear. Again, those were for accession structure. So knowing that, is there any feedback or, or any thoughts on setbacks? For, and we're not talking about a residential scale, when I say residential scale, for a single family dwelling, you know, generally for that type of use. This would be the, the type of facility we're setting or special exception process.
Would it be possible around here, would somebody come in and come to this state, state property, county property, or city property to put in a solar field, and then what?
Most of that property, so I'll, I'll say county property, it's very limited, you know, as far as our current holdings of county property. It would, it would pertain to the zone, but if it is a, I'm unaware of any state projects or federal government, you know, projects pertaining to solar, but they would be exempted from, from the local ordinance as far as zoning goes. They're, they're not exempted from subdivision, but they are exempted from local.
By county property, I include board of education property on our schools.
So, so yeah, that, that would not be exempt, so they would fall under the same standards. And, and that's fairly limited, but it's actually more land than, than Rockbridge County proper owns, if you will, as far as the school division versus, versus the county.
So this would apply then?
Oh, absolutely. Yes. I mean, most of those are in agricultural zone. We do have some, yeah, most of them are in agricultural zone. So the, the county would not be exempt from local regulation pertaining to special exceptions, that type of thing. But there, there's no, there, there's been no discussion, if you will, on, on the county, even the school board or, or school holdings or county holdings, developing a, a solar facility as we're talking about this evening. But, good point.
Comment that I think front setback from roads and other property lines is, is important and just to have enough room for a buffer, whether it be a single row, double row. But you know what that right number is? Like, I couldn't tell you, probably 65 feet would be a minimum. What it, what did you all find for other counties in terms of front setbacks? And I see 150 to 200 from property lines.
It does range, and so, and that's the most, and Nick has done most of the work with this. But with that being said, the, the information that I've reviewed, it does range significantly. And some just leave it up to the special exception. I will say this, you know, treating these as an accessory structure, if you will, the front setback would have to be met, and that, that's been, that's, that's held true on all applications, previous applications and moving forward applications. It's, and generally speaking, I think that the, the, yeah, this has been true so far, that the, the front setbacks haven't been as big of a concern as the adjacent property, because front setbacks are historically, it doesn't have to be, and we have one tonight that, that's actually not, that, that the front setback is a property line, let's put it that way. Historically, the front setback is where the, the public road is, the frontage towards the public road. But they would have to be at a minimum, even under current ordinance, treating it as a session structure, they would have to be 65 foot front minimum currently. You, you would prefer 300, and is that 300 all the way around? And I could provide, we could provide you other setbacks, other uses such as livestock confinement facilities that we have setbacks. That's actually, if I recall correctly, yes, 150 foot front setback for a livestock confinement facility from the edge of the road right of way. And then it does boost up to 300 feet, if I recall correctly on that.
So let me ask you, the setback of 300 feet, is that because of site or just what? I mean, I, I don't disagree with that.
Look at the property around.
Yeah.
That property owns around. And I mean, still, it's just used by special perception. So I mean, if you've got something set, it's set in, here's, here's where, where we're starting at. And if somebody's coming in, then they've got a hail note coming in, here's what we're looking at. They will try to do something less, I'm assuming they could come in and get up. There'll be something they could, we could do, and could, could be changed back.
That, that sounds like other localities have that, have that flexibility.
The one at Alexander is probably 300 foot off 11.
Absolutely.
Right now, it's 300, it's 300 foot off 11.
It's considered the frontage, even though the other side's 81 or.
It's not.
Absolutely, and it's not, I'm safe to say it's not on the side, the side facing, I'm sorry, the, the property line that is not owned by the Alexander family.
The solar property.
Yes, I don't, I don't believe that's the one.
But do you have a screen?
That, that, yes, sir, yes. All right, so we, so what, again, what does, the purpose of this is, what I foresee happening here is getting some feedback from the, from feedback from the planning commission, and then, and then have some sort of proposed ordinance. You know, and I'm not, I can't, right, I never say something I can't follow up on, but our goal would be at the next regular planning commission, but that, again, it's a workload allowance, for sure. And, and that would be a draft ordinance for y'all's consideration, long before we take it to public hearing and long before a committee. We have talked about a committee, and I still wholeheartedly, I think a committee would be good to look at this, but I've always said throughout the process, this one and every other one, you know, I think it'd be beneficial for the committee to have some, some groundwork going into, you know, some sort of, some sort of document that, that, a starting point, if you will, versus this type of discussion saying, okay, well, where do we go? What do y'all want to see, what you don't want to see? So we can, we incorporate, we can incorporate that, if there's a consensus of the planning commission, you know, we can incorporate that into it.
I don't know if I agree 100% to 300 is the right number. It seems like it could be overly restrictive on, it might be a good starting point, but, you know, I'm just thinking about these, track the land, if you can't fit, you know, what these companies are proposing, 3 mega wider, or mega water five, you know, within, they could be four in the 300 foot setback prevents them from doing it, but yet they own the adjacent parcel, that might be a little overly restrictive, but, you know, I don't, how, how would you put?
You, you could, you could, you could require two things. I mean, if it's, if it's, if they own us, I'm trying to think, if they own the adjacent property, you could have two, you could have one flexibility in the ordinance to allow for that, if they own the adjacent property. You could also, like in terms of setbacks for accessory structures or primary dwelling, regardless of ownership of, of the, of the property east, west, north, south, that type of thing, we require boundary line adjustment, or deed of merger, boundary line adjustment would modify, a surveyor has to go out there, perform some surveying on the ground, and then also perform a plat called a boundary line adjustment plat. And what that would do was formally vacate one line and reestablish it in a correct location. There's other, there's other parts of that that we have to take into consideration, such as minimal lot size setbacks away from the other dwellings or accessory structure, whatever it may be. But, but we can, we can certainly, we can certainly look at that. And another thing we can do is, and I'm not 100% sure on our setbacks for livestock confinement facilities, but, but again, I'm fairly confident it's 150 foot front setback for those, and then a 300 foot for all other parts. So we could certainly look at those, and, and in my opinion, there, there should be, and I'm not relating the two as far as, as far as the use of it. One, you know, I, I'm not trying to relate those two at all. What I'm trying to do is have some consistency on, on the different setbacks we have for various uses. You know, and I would find it unusual as a planner, if you will, that we have a setback of, of a lower amount for a livestock confinement facility than we do for, for a, for a solar facility. Obviously, when the solar facilities are being constructed, as we've seen in Fairfield, it is, there's a lot of trucking going in, there's a lot of equipment, heavy equipment moving. It's a, it's a, I'm not negating the impact on the surrounding community there, but once they're up and running, in my opinion, it is, it is a fairly passive use of the property as far as noise associated with construction, smell associated with it, nor, you know, just the X, Y, and Z.
Livestock confinement, it's a by, by right. You send the egg as long as they can meet the setbacks.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's a difference in what we're doing with the special setting.
So you would, what you're, what you're suggesting is starting with 300 with, with the language that you could modify to go under that? I would, we, it's, it's a starting point, again, that's what.
I mean, this is all starting, this is, here's, here's something to throw out, throw against the wall.
Of course.
Something's going to stick something not. Something's, it's going to get changed as we move forward, we all know that. So let's start out, you get something spread down, you can spread it out, you can squeeze it in, you can change whatever you need to change, but at least it's, we're not sitting here with a, a blank page.
Absolutely.
Like I got right now.
Yes.
Easier to go that way than the other way.
Yeah. All right, with that, I'll let Nick explain his findings on anti-glare.
This was pretty consistent throughout of the counties, all of them employ some type of use of anti-glare. Obviously, it just helps the surrounding community. The facility shall only use panels that employ anti-glare technology, anti-reflective coatings to reduce lint and glare. They have to provide with certification that they have that on the panels, and the board of supervisors are able to impose conditions requiring that the siding and mitigation meets, minimizes the impacts on surrounding use, view sheds for the residential areas. They can also have a professional submit a, a glint and glare study that demonstrates that the panels will be sided, designed, installed to eliminate glare and glint effects on roadway users, nearby residences, commercial areas, and other sensitive viewing locations, or that the applicant will use all reasonably available mitigation techniques to reduce lint and glare to the lowest achievable level.
So that was pretty cut and dry. I mean, we have implemented, of course, you know, in the past, we have gotten glare studies. You know, and I think all of us ridden by between our travels between here and there, ridden by large scale solar fields. With that being said, I've never, I've never personally witnessed a, the ones in Rockbridge, nor the ones, you know, between here and the Carolinas, if you will, any glare associated with it, but this is, this is certainly checks and balances. And this one, well, before I get into, I was about to say how we can handle this with conditions, but I think we do have, do we have the slides at the end that say proposed conditions that have been utilized? Okay, so before, I, I don't want to start saying, you know, the difference between an ordinance and conditions. I think our very last two slides have some draft conditions that we utilized in the past, or could utilize in the future, rather. So any comments on the glare?
Yeah, if, is it any different between the Trace the Sun panels and just the stationary panels?
I am uncertain, not, not that, not that was received in other applications. We have done glare studies in other applications with one of them being obviously proximity, very close proximity to 81. And, and, you know, we had concerns, rightfully so, and, and worked with other localities and, and I think even B9 at the time. But, but no, there were no concerns on all the ones we are getting, in my opinion, all the ones we're going to get for a special exception are going to be the rotating with the sun. We have not seen one that does not use that technology. That's not the case with, with residential scale or for a single family dwelling, I'll start calling it. But, but with that being said, that all the applications we've seen today are the rotating mechanisms. And we have not seen the glare associated with them versus the others that are, that are, do not rotate.
That's good to have in there. Just if a proponent comes forward with a, with a project, and we would want them to require a, a view shed analysis or photo simulations, who, obviously, they're not going to do it on their own. I mean, so who determines view sheds, including residential areas, areas of scenic, historical, cultural, archaeological, recreational significance? Is it up to, to staff or the?
I believe they hire a professional that meets the standards of the board of supervisors. I think they have to certify who is certifying them.
A landscape architect, they would.
Well, and, and some of that, it, this, we'll get to some of the view shed analysis in the surrounding area. So with that being said, we do, in our telecommunications ordinance, we do require the photo simulations. And we're, we're going to get to that in another slide. But in that particular, in that particular ordinance, again, associated with telecommunications ordinances, it's the zoning administrator that, that works with the applicant to pick out the particular sites. And I think some of these, we do have some view shed analysis type thing on the ones, the ones, the ones with that pending applications, if you will. We have done that, of course, with other ones as well, and, and we always have been part of that. In fact, Robert and I, and several others picked out a few parts on one of the particular projects, and, and we'll certainly continue that in the future. The problem is, one issue I see at the very conception of the application of getting this information beforehand is you're limited to public, public viewing areas, if you will, public roads, that type of thing. And you're not getting this level of concern of the, of the lady or gentleman that lives across the highway, up on the ridge or anything else. So that will be, for lack of a better term, a moving target as it progresses, as far as a bare minimum. The telecommunications ordinance requires five photo simulations and the location to be choo-chosen with assistance of the zoning structure. So I think that would be good language to carry on over to this particular one. But that definitely wouldn't show any glare, you know, I mean, it would, it would not get into that level of detail. But the other, the, the certifications would.
For the surrounding environment, the facilities must comply with generally accepted national environmental protection and safety standards, and a final site plan must reference the specific safety environmental standards applied with. And these can include any cultural or historical items of significance, potential impacts on wildlife and wildlife habitats at the site in the two mile radius, impacts on pollinators and pollinator habitats at the site, and a report submitted to identify the historical, architectural, archaeological, or other cultural resources on the work near the proposed facility, and needs to be determined by all the different associations like the Virginia Department of Game and Fishing, to determine what is important.
And we do, I mean, this is, this is out of the realm of existing ordinances, if you will. You know, we, we, we've talked about this a lot. We do have some wildlife corridor mapping. So we'll just, well, I'll turn it over to the planning commission before I start chatting too much.
Flip to the next slide.
Oh, did I flip to the next slide?
Can you, somebody continue?
Well, it's sort of, it, it, in, in certain ways, it does as far as fencing and vegetation, but we'll, we'll stop with the environment slide.
Just warm up slide.
So we could continue, we could continue discussing this, studying this. I'm really not sure. I, I don't have a, another example of an ordinance, existing ordinance that I'm familiar with that, that gets in this level of detail in Rockbridge County. But we could certainly continue to explore what other localities are doing and see if that, see if it's a good fit. And, and to back up a little bit, I mean, we're, we're not, we're not looking at other locality to say, okay, this is a perfect fit for Rockbridge County. As you know, with zoning text amendments, we've probably done four or five zoning text amendments this year, if you will. And so what we do is we, we use it as a, as a point of conversation, obviously. I think that not reinventing the wheel as far as the point of conversation, if that makes sense.
So the, there's first thing with the generally accepted national environmental protection and product safety standards. Is that applying to the, to what, that, just the?
I would say the facility itself, the, the panels, the, the infrastructure, X, Y, and Z. And, and again, we'll have some slides at the end of it that we've utilized, that we've discussed in the past, that, that could pertain to some of that environmentally sensitive conversation. But, but to answer your question directly, I believe it would be the whole, the, the entire facility.
And we have something on a national level to look to comply with or?
Yes, I mean, yeah, yeah, there, there are certain guidelines, I believe, yes.
One thing I think when you look at the store of environmental concerns is, let's just say you have a hailstorm comes through, it drops and three large hail busts up half the panels. What's the time, what would be a timeframe for removing those damaged panels and getting them away from property and secure whether it would be any type of leakage or if it's possible to reach out of and get in the ground if it gives water. Everybody says there's nothing in them. I kind of find that hard to believe. But we will play environment here, let's go down the, let's go down the path.
So one thing we could do, one thing that we've been talked about in the past, and, and, and as far as, as far as it, it's considered a panel specification and composition. And, you know, at the time, a site plan review or even special exception review, the applicant could provide y'all, the planning commission, a written panel specification disclosure document that includes the composition of all solar panels being utilized in the facility.
Like that didn't could, it be, it should.
Absolutely, yes.
Have to.
Shall. I use the word shall, yes.
Shall.
Fair enough. And I think that might address, and that's what I was saying, you know, as far as dressing it as a whole.
Material data sheet or MSDS, I used to call them material safety data sheet?
Some, some of that affect because there's, I feel like, I feel like damaged panels will cause a problem. I feel like if these folks are going to be business, business things once a, a month, we used to say what happens in the halfway through the month.
Sure. It could have some influence on, on setbacks as well, as far as, as far as being able to reach with various activities, you know, reaching from adjoining properties. Not, but I'm speaking specifically of families, you know. And, and that's, of course, to talk about the past as well, for the need for fencing, which we're going to get through here in a second, and then also the screening, the vegetation, a lot of people like to say out of sight, out of mind. But it's actually very next one, fencing and vegetation.
Fencing's pretty standard, like the anti-glare among all of them. They won't, pretty much every county wants a security fence that's six feet high exactly with barbed wire on top, so nobody's trespassing or vandalizing them to surround the entire facility. And it should be installed on the interior of the vegetative buffer so that it's not seen from anywhere. The planning director may also require the fencing to be placed on the solar energy farm in a manner as to allow wildlife corridors through and around the project site, so it doesn't mess with natural migration.
Say that again about the wildlife partners.
The planning director may also. Uh, the planning director may also require fencing to be placed on the solar energy farm in a manner as to allow wildlife corridors through and around the project site. Really? Uh, and then for the vegetative uh buffer, it is a landscaping strip. It can be double wide or single wide, it's up to each county. They're all pretty different on how they implement them, but they usually want something three or four feet tall that you plant. It's already that height and needs to grow in year two or within three years to six to maybe ten feet tall. Uh, and they want you to use local vegetation, obviously no imports or anything. And it must be seeded with the appropriate palmetto from the native plants, shrubs, trees, grass. The strip is generally between ten fifteen feet wide between the counties. Uh, I would figure that into setbacks if you want to include it or not. It's important to use non-avasive plant species and pollinator friendly and wildlife friendly plants. If any existing trees and vegetation are disturbed or die, it's up to the facility owner to provide new plants for the buffer. The buffer must be maintained for the entire life of the facility. And the buffer is imperative to hide the security fence from the surrounding dwellings to protect existing trees from public exposure.
And I think we've been pretty consistent on that as far as the applications previously passed. It's uh it's been interesting. I think ten to fifteen feet is a very small buffer. I think we've we've generally been getting a double row, uh, which was a far exceed ten to fifteen feet. Uh, this one's unusual because in in and a lot of localities have that it's surrounding the entire thing. That this this manmade buffer, if you will, surrounds the entire facility. In some cases, that's not necessary. And I say that, and I'm not saying that the adjacent landowner should be the buffer, because that's never the case, even if they have trees on their property. We'd never say, oh, well, they have a buffer. In that case, it is, but if the trees are on the property owner, uh, that that is doing the facility or the applicant, if you will. Uh, we could incorporate language that that those trees are required to be preserved, you know? That type of thing. And so I think all of these, we have been pretty consistent on. The one thing with the fencing that that's intrigued me throughout the throughout the years, if you will, is that we historically started with a chain link fence with a three foot of uh barbed wire on top. And you may remember on the Barker Street application, they actually came back in and said, hey, uh, we would prefer a more agricultural style fencing. And and they actually came back and with a woven wire fence uh and made an application to amend not only the landscaping conditions. Associated with some off-site uh landscaping, if you recall correctly, and then also the fencing. So that we also talk about that, but I think that does have character on the facility.
That's a nitpick, but it, this is ag land, right? Okay, they can have a fence around ag land, right?
Absolutely.
So if they have a fence around it, there's never going to be a wildlife card that the solar farm would have to.
I would agree with that, yes, a six or ten foot impede wildlife, yes.
And if there's, anyway, what I'm getting at is that it's a nice idea to have the corridor. But if the farmer came in and put fencing around, he'd cut off the animal corridor.
That that's the difference between a by right use and a special exception. As you know, these these uses are special exceptions in all the agricultural zoning districts. And so you can, you you certainly have the ability to set conditions that are above and beyond even the average use of the land next door because of the special exception. I would like to dive more into the wildlife corridors. I think there is a map showing some significant wildlife corridors throughout Rockbridge County. Uh, with that being said, I don't think we get into a level of detail on a, you know, a a watershed type area. Uh, but it would be interesting to further explore, but that's an excellent point. But the answer is, is because this is a special exception. And and the special exception process, of course, the planning commission can recommend uh conditions. And the board of supervisors can can take those recommendations uh and and impose the conditions. Or they can modify the conditions, they can remove the conditions altogether. With that being said, the conditions have to be sound, reasonable, and associated with the use of the property. So you also, you know, another important factor is it's not, they're not unlike proffers associated with the rezoning. These are not agreed upon. The 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 conditions associated with a special exception permit do are not required to be agreed upon by the landowner or applicant. But again, they have to be sound, reasonable, and associated with the use. So this was, I think this was fairly, I think it's been consistent throughout the throughout the processes. I think usually we do three, uh, generally speaking.
We'll have to keep here for the, should keep here for the process, six foot plus three.
Yeah, that should, that's the challenge, yes, the bit, yeah.
I think now the tree height, as far as plantings go, I think we're a little shy on that. If they come in and say they got, look, they could use natural Rockbridge County vegetation and somebody comes in and goes, oh, we'll plant cedar trees. The solar field will be done by the time the trees get tall enough to scream. The slow cedar trees grow most of them. One place I think that they've done well at is it uh the Dominion Power Substation in Fairfield, they built a berm and then planted like six foot cedar trees on top of it. And they took off and did fairly well and they're tall now, but that's been there for twenty-five years, thirty years. About thirty years.
Sure.
So.
And we do suggest as far as what we reach out to, when applicants reach out to us, I should say, we do have the TCO Design and Construction Guidelines. With that being said, some of these projects are in TCO, some of them will go to the TCO for site plan approval. Some of them are outside the TCO, I'd say the majority of them are outside the TCO. With that being said, the one important document that the TCO Design and Construction Guidelines have is a recommended species list. And that's going to be native plants, that type of thing. It's going to be, it's going to be good for all regardless of location or Rockbridge County. And they do break it down versus trees, shrubs, buffers, those types of things.
Three foot's not very tall, so. Oh, I'm saying. If we need to bump that. Six.
And that's 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 held true as far as the past. And it's been, I I think it has been four to six feet in planting, depending on what species they're they're planting. But obviously, if you're planting an evergreen, the the that has been the go-to number for the planning, I should I should say, six to eight feet.
Yeah, I think that's four.
I'm sorry, four to six.
That needs to be in.
And we'll look at the various buffers. But again, I think buffers, and that's really the beauty, in my opinion, of the special exception. Again, at the beginning meeting in all agricultural zoning districts, these are special exceptions. And and special exceptions are on a case by case. They're they're unique to the conditions of the site, the applicant, the landowner, that type of thing. So in some cases, again, the buffers require, some cases it's not. Could mitigate future, I should say.
Uh, this is for the height of the solar panels themselves. The ground mounted solar energy generation facilities may not exceed a height of between ten and twenty feet where other counties had. Uh, and then other structures on the land and accessory buildings cannot pass fifteen feet from the finished grade at the base to the highest point.
I think we're looking at one tonight that says thirty-five feet.
Uh, from the average grade to the peak? I was on, I was unaware of that.
So thirty-five feet, you know, so I don't look at, but that's so.
We we have never seen one that exceeds even fifteen feet. So it'd be interesting to see.
I'm seeing, I'm wondering if somebody had a fat bag or something on that with uh when they were typing the depth. The uh height definitely won't factor in these things.
As I said, if as far as a single family dwelling, uh, solar uh accessory structure, we've never seen one go over fifteen feet on that one. And and in all draft conditions and and then final ordinances, we have a fifteen feet. Final ordinances for the special exception, I should say, uh, we have a fifteen feet cap on those. And that's been, that's been consistent and has never been brought up as a fish. I did find it unusual, it's uh ten, fourteen, and and twenty. In fact, I think some of them, most of them are eleven. What's that?
Uh, also, the the limit does not apply to utility poles and to the interconnection to the overhead uh electric, electric utility grid. Uh, the board of supervisors are allowed to approve the greater height based upon demonstration of significant need with impacts of increased height.
It's a good point.
This one's pretty simple. Lighting for the facility, it must be limited to the minimum reasonable necessary for security purposes. Also, the lighting is designed to minimize offsite effects on neighboring properties. And the light on the site should be dark skies compliant to reduce the effects of light.
Lighting associated with any of these?
We have not seen it. We have.
Say this minimum, minimum reasonably necessary, have it, measure that for me.
We would generally, I think in a draft condition in the past, we have spelled out two sections of the lighting ordinance that is are required to be here. They're they're less, uh, there's less ambiguity there than than what we're reading here, so I agree with that.
This, that, that.
So I can't recall two sections, but the end of the slide, again, I got, we have some draft conditions that 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 could be utilized.
To me, you're sitting here with, if it's solar panel, by the need of.
Yeah. I agree, and and I have not seen, we have not heard that it being an issue in in other localities, and we have not seen any lighting associated with uh with projects that we've seen.
It seems like if you have the six foot chain link fence with three feet of barbed wire and lights on the you know, perimeter, it's going to look like a prison.
Yes, and and I will say, the lighting, we have a lighting ordinance, it's not full of dark sky compliance. Uh, with that being said, um, uh, it does not pertain to agricultural property. So and we do this from time to time, have issues with lighting in the agricultural zones. But again, the lighting does not pertain to those type of issues. Dust dawn lights, those type of things, unshielded dust dawn lights. In fact, it just doesn't apply to the agricultural zones as far as lighting goes. But again, back to Mr. Kramer's point, you know, one, I don't think it's a, I I think in reality, they just don't use a lot of lighting. They being solar, solar fields. And then two, uh, for checks and balances, if you will, you could impose a condition associated with, I think it's two sections of ordinance, but we have that at the very tip.
You know, these large scale panels have, you know, they they have inverters that convert the, convert it to electricity.
Yes.
And there are sometimes there are like control lights on the inverters, like a a blue light or a green light. I mean, I'm familiar with with one in particular, and so you can see that, you know, uh, off in the distance at at nighttime. So I, you know, I don't, that's something I just thought of, you know, no one wants to see, you get your break from seeing them if you're if you're in the view shed of them at nighttime. And you don't want to see, you know, a thousand little blue dots or green dots of the same field. So I don't know if that's just something to ask or clarify about. Put piece of black tape over them, I don't know.
It's something that's on the shield.
Yeah.
There's actually one of those I've seen on here in the last couple of months associated with a power pole on Route sixty west. And I found it, it was green, I believe, the green, uh, found it sort of unusual, it hadn't been. So, yeah, we can certainly state that.
Uh, the surrounding area, uh, an assessment of the impact on the immediate vicinity of the proposed solar project should be prepared and submitted to the county zoning half of the requests. Or cycle and approval request. Yap can should demonstrate uh how the project minimizes the impact of visual character of the feature, including the knowledge, schools, churches, structures. The documented historical significance. Large-scale solar energy facilities may not be locally modeled in airport. Uh, the professional will be, would make a community impact assessment that outlines the project's effects on the surrounding area. And these can include examples of revenues to the county from real estate and personal property taxes. Employment opportunities that are created, economic impact of the development, fire rescue and law enforcement requirements, sewer and stormwater. Also providing services to the proposed development and efforts to mitigate the service.
And I think this is where, this is where the potential photo simulations would come into place. And and you know, I think we have a good, uh, I I think we have a good track record, if you will, of providing accurate photo simulations for other uses. And I think that could be easily continued. And it's not uncommon when we're when we're talking, uh, when we're talking to solar developers and and what to be prepared for. I, if I recall correctly, the 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 applications pending have multiple photo simulations from public roads. Again, that's that's the kicker. When you're starting at this point, you do not have landowner's permission, the right to entry, that type of thing. But but if that, if that comes out through the process, that has been done in the past. I think it was the uh adjacent property from Walker's Creek, if I recall correctly, requested the photo simulations for their backyard area. And, you know, generally speaking, we found that uh the developers, special, special exception application applicants are amenable to those requests. But that would, that would, again, for lack of a better term, be a sort of a moving target throughout the process. But at minimum, we would start with five photo simulations uh from from the appropriate areas. I'll share a story, I remember, just anecdote, I remember getting photo simulations for a proposed cell tower. And it was two that could see it and then three that could not. And they said, this is what you see before and this is what you see after. They didn't read the point that the zoning administrator was responsible for finding what vantage points. So we went back out and we were able to find different vantage points that in, believe it or not, and all five of them, you could see it. So it won't be, this is before and this is after, there there's no difference, thanks.
We gotta change that to including, but not limited to home, schools, churches, structures. Along with documented historical.
Good catch.
Not uh just those with documented historical significance, has to include everything. And then you can throw the historical significance in there.
Yeah, that's a good catch, absolutely. So this one, I'll take this slide if you don't mind, Dick. Uh, this one was revenue share. Obviously, we've talked about revenue sharing with the board of supervisors, uh, and then updated the planning commission appropriately. Uh, in uh the regular twenty twenty-two legislative session, House Bill ten eighty-seven was approved to remove the exemption of five megawatts or less. Projects from taxation of the generated equipment. In addition, the remove, the, in addition, the bill removed the exemption of five megawatts or less projects for assessment of revenue share by order. So prior to that bill being passed by the general assembly, we did not have the authority to impose revenue sharing. Uh, this, this bill was approved, of course, by the general assembly and it was effective July first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, five projects of five megawatts or less approved prior to July first, twenty twenty-two would remain exempt. At the June meeting, obviously right before it went to effect, uh, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the board of supervisors meeting, the board approved an ordinance for assessment of a revenue sharing at a rate of fourteen hundred dollars per megawatt on any solar project within the county. And so that is, that's a standing ordinance. Um, and that's, you know, that's, it's, while y'all would obviously have input on that, you know, that's a, that's a uh action by the board of supervisors, it did not come to y'all for recommendation, obviously. That was associated with um uncertain what chapter it is, but it's taxation chapter of the county code. So that is in place currently.
It's annual amount per megawatt.
That is annual amount per megawatt, yes, sir. So this is sort of long-winded, I'll let Nick read the long-winded one, how about this? And what what we've done here is, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot, rightly so, there's a lot of focus on the decommissioning plan and and decommissioning agreement. Uh, we don't get the decommissioning agreement at this level. Uh, sort of another anecdote, sorry, we had the Alexanders come in for the building or the the development company associated with Alexander Solar Field. Uh, Dynamic Energy and and they came in for a building permit and they actually uh submitted the decommissioning plan. And so I had to back up and say, hey, we don't have an decommissioning agreement. And they were incorrectly thinking the decommissioning plan was the agreement. So after, after two emails later, uh, many, many hours from this up and working on the decommissioning agreement. Uh, we were able to approve the decommissioning agreement, uh, have the proper person sign the decommissioning agreement. And then we were able to proceed uh with the building permit, the zoning portion of the building permit. But with that being said, this is a sort of a long-winded uh explanation and what what we thought just point blank is we would just read the code of Virginia section that pertains to the decommissioning plan. Yeah, I think so, yeah. Yeah.
That, the code of Virginia fifteen point two dash. Uh, fifteen point two dash twenty-two forty-one point two B states that as part of the local legislative approval process or as a condition of approval of a site plan, a locality shall require an owner, Lisi, or developer of real property subject to this section to enter into a written agreement to decommission solar energy equipment, facilities, or devices upon the following terms and conditions. Term one, if the party that enters into such written agreement with the locality defaults in the obligation to decommission such equipment, facilities, or devices in the timeframe set out in such agreement, the locality
equipment, facilities, or devices in the timeframe set out in such agreement, the locality has the right to enter the real property of the record title owner of such property without further consent of such owner and to engage in decommissioning. And two, such owner, leasing, or developer provides financial assurance of such performance to the locality in the form of certified funds, cash escrow, bond, letter of credit, or parent guarantee based upon an estimate of a professional engineer license in the Commonwealth who is engaged by the applicant with experience in preparing decommissioning estimates and approved by the locality. Such estimate shall not exceed the total of the projected cost of decommissioning, which may include the net salvage value of such equipment, facilities, or devices, plus a reasonable allowance for estimated administrative costs related to a default of the owner, leasing, or developer and an annual inflation factor.
So with that one, uh, we, there was one, there was one of the previous, uh, decommissioning plans that the board of supervisors approved did include, uh, some, it it says which may include the net salvage, excuse me, the net salvage value of such equipment. We we have done that one time based on some some internal conversations and and conversations with members of planning commission board supervisors. We no longer, we are no longer interested in giving credit to the net salvage value. It's just one more thing, of course, bonds, uh, we have inflation associated with bonds, and they're, I think they would review them every two years, and they post a new bond amount every two years based on inflation. With that being said, that in my opinion, that salvage value of these things was just one more thing to catch up with. Uh, and so we were not interested in giving them credit towards the salvage. I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful, if you will, or fairly confident that that will continue in the future, that we that we don't. Is that, it's a common question that we get from the very beginning, uh, when talking about the decommission plan. So it, the next one says conditions that's utilized in the past, uh, we sort of briefly talked about this in another slide. Uh, one that has been, uh, accepted in the past is acceptance of a decommissioning agreement incorporating the decommissioning plan dated blank, and that's obviously based on the date that it's prepared, uh, subject to a Virginia licensed engineer certification of the decommissioning cost as outlined in the code of Virginia fifteen point two twenty-two forty-one, uh, period two B. And so I did, I did want to emphasize that because we do, we we've had a lot of feedback that 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 these costs are are under undervaluated. Uh, it does require a licensed land surveyor. And so once you have a license, I'm sorry, license, you're used to saying licensed land surveyor. It does require, per code of Virginia, the Virginia licensed engineer certification on the decommissioning cost. Uh, so there's only so much flexibility, in my opinion, there's only so much flexibility to have, the county would have to, uh, dispute that, those costs. And it has been, it has been consistent throughout the process as far as what one is saying versus another, based on the size of the facility.
Has there been, uh, to your knowledge, any that had actually been decommissioned?
Certainly not in Rockbridge County, I know that, and I'm not, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not familiar of any of them in the in the Commonwealth, Virginia, if you will, that have been, you know, been walked away from or or have extended the lifespan. And of course, as y'all know, the lifespan is generally speaking twenty-five to thirty, thirty-five.
Are there any have been decommissioned yet?
Yeah.
Seen somewhere where a decommissioning plan has to be updated every five years. Um, what kind of burden would that put on the county staff to keep up with that? Um, versus having, you know, an inflation factor built in, you know, you're hoping you start with a good number. Inflation factor keeps up with it, but you know, something changes or our landfill closes if it was ever approved to put them in there. Um, they have to be shipped off and that, you know, and forbid the developer walks away and the county and landowner have to deal with with the mess. I mean, it seems, seems good to have a mechanism where it can be updated. It has to be resigned every five years, ten years.
I I'm not, we're paying provisions allowed for that, but we could certainly look in.
Maybe a.
I mean, aside from the agreement, obviously, as you stated with the inflation factor.
Right.
Operator and and solar, solar operators, solar operator, walk away from it at the end. And we've got X amount of dollars in the bond, and air costs exceed the amount of bond, we should be able to go back to landowner and collect it, whatever it costs the county to finish decommissioning, that's the bond landlords' shoulders. That we, we're not getting so much of this. But if these guys go bankrupt and go under, it needs to fall back to, it needs to fall back to landlord, then they got skin in the game. Then that, as far as maybe having to pay for part of the decommissioning, or all of it, if if these guys go belly up. I look for. The bond amount doesn't cover, but I I look, I just, the the inflation rate and with what's going on in the country now, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be shooting under where we're gonna be at. If you got to take these panels and haul them three states away by the tractor trailer load, how long is it going to take and what's it going to cost? That's something I think we need to look at. It's just, it's kind of like the one we proved up on eleven. It was brought up, we wanted to move the, uh, screening towards the road, so would grow because of the elevation and the site to make it work, would screen it quicker, okay? And and it was brought up, well, they maybe they don't want to do that, and I'm like, okay. They want a solar field, they can do it. If they don't, same way with this.
And the outcome was, of course, they 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 took the recommendation and moved the.
And moved it up, and because they love a solar field.
No, I agree.
I mean, it's the same way with this now. But we don't, the taxpayer, I'll be dead, okay, when this all, when something happens, I'll be long gone and and not a memory. But somebody in the taxpayers in this county could very well get home with the bill for decommissioning something that we got fourteen hundred dollars a year per megawatt on. And that when we begin to cover, we'll begin to cover. But if you look at all the, if you look at all these decommissioning plans they got in place, they go three foot below surface or four foot below surfaces. All the farther down they go to pull any of their wiring posts or anything out. So they're going down three foot in ground, hacking the posts off, and what is left in ground, left in the ground.
So to be clear, the back to the fourteen hundred dollar comment, that's the revenue share.
I know, that's revenue sharing, but the county's getting fourteen hundred dollars of of a year per megawatt, whatever, to as far as tax revenue coming from. That won't be enough to even begin to start to cover decommissioning. If sure.
Nor should it be, absolutely.
Should it be, yeah, but I'm just saying, it's not like we're gonna get fat and rich, the county is off of them, they can go back and pull them down, go, yeah, we're still money to eat. This was a, this was a game changer for the county, we had so much extra cash in the coffers for it.
It's maybe a dumb or basic question, but why is the county on the hook anyway for, uh, for decommissioning if if the developer walks away? Why shouldn't it be the landowner or? I'm just wondering why the county would even be involved except for.
We have a right, it says we have a right to go on the property without the landlord's permission to decommission it or take it down. It's what, it's what the verbic is saying. But I'm with you, we shouldn't even have skin in the game. It should fall right back on the landowner, and if landowner doesn't do it, you seize the land.
Well, we were required to, obviously, by state law, we're we're required to have the decommissioning agreement, you know, with with the associated factors.
You seize the property and tear the thing down, forget about it. It's a county selling property, what are they going to do with it? And give what is left over to the landowner, if that's what it came down to. I know Vicky's over and her head's spinning right now, I can see her eyes, she's like.
No, I was just gonna answer the question, it provides in state code that we can require a decommissioning agreement and performance bond. Uh, otherwise, if if state law did not authorize it, we would not have the authority to require it. So it is provided in there that the county can require that in order to ensure that the project is decommissioned.
So if it's LLC and it goes belly up, what happens? Then who owns it?
Do you mean an LLC is the owner?
Yeah, rather than like Dominion, you know, hopefully, they're not gonna go bankrupt, but like, you know, uh, around the country, you've got all these and and got people looking to invest money, and they form an LLC and say, we'll go out and start a solar farm.
So that's no different from any other type of owner, um, except that.
It's not a corp, it's not a C corp.
It doesn't matter. A C corp isn't, you can't collect money any better from a corp than you can from an LLC. If they owe the money, you can recover judgment, but if they go bankrupt or they dissolve or disappear, you can't collect money from them. Which is why you get a performance bond.
The C corps are gonna be, at least the ones I've seen and and read about, are gonna be something like Dominion.
Not necessarily.
I know, but have we seen any corporations other than the Dominion?
Meaning a- as far as the applicants?
Yeah.
Uh, not to my knowledge, they they, I think it's fairly consistent being LLCs.
I'm, I'm with them.
The minions jumping in and they're taking power off.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're building a solar field and they're taking the power off of our hands as well. They don't want solar.
So going back to liability in terms of decommissioning, and I understand the bond and and, you know, if if the company doesn't renew the lease after the useful life of the field, then that money could be, if they don't take initiative to 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 decommission it themselves, that money can be used for it. If it's not enough, then what? Is it up to the landowner? Or, you know, if they get three fourths of it decommissioned appropriately and there's a quarter of it left, you know, is it up to the county to say, you know, you have, or we have to pay for it or or the landowner is is responsible or well, sorry, you're just left with an ass or it doesn't work?
I think it's gonna be, have to be a condition of your special exception permit approval because state code does not authorize us to obtain a performance bond from the landowner. And we have, in fact, tried to do that previously, and the landowner refused. And we, because they already had a special exception permit. Um, so I think it needs to be made a condition in order to have it work that way. Because they do, the landowner does have to sign the application as the owner of the property, and they should be responsible.
It's gotta fall back on somebody other than tax, other than the taxpayer of Rockbridge County. Like I said, I'll be long gone, but somebody will be here and they don't need to put the bill.
Certainly something we can set as a condition.
That's the deal.
Yes.
And and like I said, to me, decommission, they need, if they're saying they can pull it out of the ground, they need to take everything. They put it in the ground, they need to take it out. Extend feet in ground, need to pull it out of the ground. Concrete, in concrete, they need to get it out. They're gonna put it back the way it was before it was put in.
I mean, that's what decommissioning is.
Yeah.
Make it like it was.
They're going in the ground, X number of feet is what I'll show them, that's what some of them showed tonight, that's what they're looking at, three feet, four feet underground, whatever's under that, they're leaving.
The question would be, what what's the common practice of going more than four feet with any of these facilities?
They can, they can put it in our, in our ordinance.
So understood, I I definitely understand, uh, understand the train of thought and understand the direction. Um, as far as other considerations for approvals, I think we have, uh, one for ordinance, one from approvals. Uh, these, these are all, uh, could be implemented and some have been implemented. Uh, substantial compliance with the concept plan, schematic plan, that's one thing to understand, uh, that that where where the level we are is this is a, this is a, it's a concept plan. So there is, um, and even Mr. Lucas and I talked about this with Alexander property as far as what was approved by the planning commission. They made some modifications to those, it's up to the zoning administrator myself to see if those are substantial compliance. Uh, I think that could be challenged, but but they were, they're they're not very, very, they're not very, there's not much variation of what y'all are seeing and what we're seeing as far as a ten thousand square foot view, I should say. With that being said, they they do make some, uh, modifications, but we, again, as we meet with solar developers, we say these are conditions, these are common conditions that the planning commission can impose, do impose, and we talk to things about down to school more management facilities, where they are, where they're located, having some sort of, are they engineering these plans? Absolutely not, but there's some, some, uh, connection there between the schematic plan that's prepared under a special exception and what's coming back to y'all, uh, as a, as a site plan. So you have a comment?
I've heard something. Looked like it.
What's that?
It looked like I should have.
No, no, I thought I heard something, sorry. Uh, the other one is, you know, and we'll go, the next two slides go through this or or the last two slides, I should say. Uh, panel specification compensation, we talked briefly about that, hours of operations pertaining to the construction and decommissioning. Again, that is a, that can have a large impact on the the community, uh, during the hours of construction and decommissioning. Uh, implement implementation and project completion dates, that's always, uh, important to to, uh, have, have in the ordinance, have in the condition. Um, if it's not specified in the conditions, it's a six month of, uh, implementation phase. Uh, approvals contingent upon outside agencies and departments, and that's been consistent just about every special exception we have, you know, building department, B dot, these do still require a low, by my understanding, they still require a low volume commercial interest permit. So that can be, you know, that can be problematic in some cases, and we'd certainly see, uh, project get modified based on the entrance requirements. Uh, other considerations for an ordinance, uh, obviously, the purpose and intent, the definition section, and these are, these are sudden, some other ones. And I'm not sure this conversation will will get to this level, uh, with this apidian, you know, impeding ordinance that we're talking about. And but we have seen in other localities, I think it's Rockingham County, if I recall correctly, I apologize. Uh, a maximum aggregate cap of solar facilities in the county, uh, that is unusual. You know, I've not seen that zoning technique in other ones that you have a fifteen thousand acre maximum aggregate cap for the county as a whole in an agricultural zoning district, let's put it that way, uh, but that, they're, they are out there. Uh, maximum and minimum distances requirements between projects, that's another tool that we've seen. Uh, I think that one's, personally, I think that's a double edged sword, because if there's a minimum or a maximum, you might just get one much larger project than you would with several smaller ones. Uh, the action, the, you have a maximum cap sometimes, the maximum project area for any facility, which includes the panels and associated equipment, shall be no more than three hundred acres. That's one that's verbatim out of an ordinance, correct? Uh, we've seen that be smaller and we've seen it be larger, I believe. Uh, one thing that I've thought of is the the area of panel coverage for any single solar facility project may not exceed blank percentage of the total acreage of the site. And again, that could be vast land holdings in the area, or you could require a boundary line adjustment to say, hey, this, this, uh, landowner has a hundred acres. Should they have the ability to do eighty acres under solar? You know, that's that's some, some consideration could be given to that. And then, of course, the prohibition of large scale utility scale solar in the hundred year floodplain is something consistently we talked about. And this is a big slide, I mean, we we don't have to, we don't have to bite this one off tonight, uh, for lack of a professional planning term, but this is the, this is a larger discussion than any other ones, any one other slide that we've talked about in the past.
There's some other, other factors to consider too, if there's more, I'll keep quiet.
Sure, absolutely. So I'm not gonna read all of these, uh, but these are some draft conditions that we've utilized in the past and we've talked about in the past. Uh, and 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 you could go back through the presentation and say, okay, because because we we're getting a lot of influence or a lot of input that that, hey, Rockbridge County doesn't have a solar ordinance, and that's obviously true. Do we allow it by special exception as a public utility? Absolutely. And we all know, uh, how beneficial the special exception can be with imposing conditions. So these are eight or nine conditions that that have been talked about in the past, utilized in some cases. Uh, number one is the development of the property, it'd be the tax map, what the application is being made, so should be, shall be substantially in accordance with the development plans titled this, prepared by this, dated with this, with the engineered date of this one. And so that gives you, that gives you the flexibility, if we did not have this one, and we just say, okay, this one's approved as a public utility. This two hundred acre parcel is approved as a public utility, uh, and and it's, you know, you present a three megawatt project. If you did not have this one, you could very well end up with a hundred and ninety acres of solar panels. But this one will have influence, a lot of influence on the outcome of the of the property, of the of the positioning of the panels, the access road, the inverters, everything else. Uh, the next one that that's been consistent from from the get go has the maximum height, uh, of the tilt of the solar ray shall not be fifteen feet, uh, shall not exceed fifteen feet, I should say. Uh, acceptance of a decommissioning agreement incorporated decommissioning plan dated this one. Uh, acceptance of a decommissioning agreement incorporated decommissioning plan dated this one, subject to a Virginia licensed engineer certification, decommissioned cost as outlined in Virginia code section that we talked about prior to. Um, won't, won't read this entire one, but y'all can read it. Uh, we do, we can have the ability to require the, the panel specifications and compositions at the type of site plan review, or even that could be modified to a special exception. Or site plan would be more appropriate in that case. The applicant shall provide the director written panel specification disclosure document that includes the composition of all solar panels they utilize for the facility. It goes on to prohibit some, uh, some types of panels and some site types of, uh, chemicals, I assume. With a, with essentially a catch-all, and I'll move this on my side because I can't see it. Uh, and/or any other material prohibited by state and federal law for the use in solar panels. So continuing on, I'll move this again. Anti-glare, we've talked about that during a slide. This is one that we, we have talked about in the past. Uh, the facility shall use only panels that employ anti-glare technology. Uh, number six is compliance with, these are two sections of code that I was trying to refer to earlier in land development regulations. Uh, section thirteen oh three, the general lighting requirements and section thirteen oh three, excuse me, thirteen oh three period oh three, general lighting requirements, and then section thirteen oh three point oh four, general design requirements. And that's already in the land development regulations. Again, we're not seeing really any lighting associated with the, with the projects we've been seeing. Uh, all the, all construction and decommissioning activities shall be limited to the hours of blank and blank, Monday through Sunday, and will be prohibited on Sundays. I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday and will be prohibited on Sundays. That can be modified. We, we, I think we've used, in the past, we had a recommendation of eight to eight, something like that. And again, I can't emphasize enough that during construction, this is a big impact to the community during construction and potential, and decommissioning someday. Uh, but once it's up and running, it, it, based on experience, it's very little maintenance, people coming, going. Again, similar to a cell tower, I believe. Uh, and that's, that's held true on the B A R C facility. We're talking to the former CEO. Uh, he, he was, he was actually surprised of just how little, uh, maintenance they were required to do or, or needed to do, I should say, not necessarily required. Uh, implementation date, uh, we've talked about this and project completion date by this, that was one that, in, in fact, that was one that the Alexanders were, were extremely the Alexander project, I should say, were extremely concerned about. And that was part of the decommissioning agreement is because I can't remember the exact dates, but in that condition, we had a implementation date and a completion date. And then lastly, uh, the catch-all that we generally do during, uh, a lot of these special exception permits, whether it be a solar, solar facility or a, uh, special event venue is approval contingent upon Virginia apartment transportation, erosion and sediment control, stormor management approvals, and all applicable state and federal regulations. So those are, you know, of course, we have draft conditions associated with previous ones that we have draft conditions associated with tonight's. We've talked about other draft conditions that could be, uh, incorporated with this work session. Uh, but these, these definitely are all in the, the draft conditions that could be utilized for tonight's discussion. And that, that was it. That, as far as, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. We can go back if needed, but, but I was hopeful uh, that, you know, our work session would go hour, hour and a half, something like that. You know, I was not anticipating it going up till the seven o'clock hour, obviously. Uh, but with that, we, we are here, we are here till seven. So, uh, you know, again, we can, we can continue the discussion now or we continue the discussion at next month's meeting.
Just curious if you, in, in research and other ordinances, if they addressed, uh, slopes. I think I was under the misconception on some of the ones that have gone in, um, to date and how much earth movement was required. Obviously, I, I would presume that the steeper the slope, the more earth needs to be moved. So, um, I don't know if y'all have seen that or I think you'll be good to address, you know, not recommending installing over a certain percentage slope, average slope. Obviously, you don't want to take out, you know, take all the flat land in the county, but, uh, you know.
All three acres though. This slope pertains to obviously the tilt of it, you know, the maximum, minimum, there, there are some, there are some varying differences there. So that's an excellent point, absolutely.
Well, it's the, the point of Fairfield, I mean, they take probably twenty feet or more off the top of the hill, maybe more than that to get to town, moving dirt around, try to get things squared away. And I'm, I'm like, uh, yeah, I said, I don't think, I, I wasn't aware that there will be that much earth moving along. I figured they'd go in and put the things in because you start, you start moving dirt, that costs a ton of money. That's.
They, they weren't required to have a, a grading plan per se where they, it's part of their, I don't recall one.
No, not for this, not for this process, but, but absolutely, that could be something that, that we could.
Cuts and fills and how much really, uh, land disturbance is gonna take place.
That can, that can alter who sees and who doesn't see a project.
Absolutely, I agree.
What you feel and then it starts driving pipes in.
I agree, yes. I'm gonna make sure this is off. Come on, Chris, let it ring. Well, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't want to bring in front of the media. I apologize. I thought that was off to begin with. When I put it in there, I obviously thought it was off, so I'm sorry about that.
No way said a word, you did.
But I feel bad having a phone ring. I usually, that was like, who is that? The screen there, oh, it's me, sorry.
At least it's ringing now and nothing to me.
Yes.
You have anything else you wanna discuss?
So, so as, and it's not gonna be as long. We obviously had this work. I can't, truthfully, I can't remember if it was a bona fide work session or if we did during the regular scheduled meeting. I did go back to the, uh, in most cases, I'll update the board of supervisors with what the planning commission did. And I was looking at this for this discussion on what we talked about then, and it resonated with me. I said, you know, as workflow allows, uh, we will continue the discussion. It certainly is not gonna be, you know, we will continue the discussion next month, whether we have a bona fide ordinance for review. You know, that, that's one thing. And again, I'm not shying away from a committee, you know, I do believe that would be good, but again, I think it'd be good to have something, something, a draft to start the discussion with, with that said committee, if that's the direction of the planning commission and or board supervisors wants to go.
So we can tell you, gentlemen, would just love to chime up. It's not a public hearing, so appreciate you all listening.
And we, and, and as you stated in the beginning, the purpose of the work session was an open dialogue between staff and the planning commission. And it's not an open forum. There will certainly be, again, whether it be committee, public hearing process, or whatever it may be. Uh, we, we are always interested in this one, but, but knowing, you know, we have a meeting in an hour and twenty minutes and we're about, I am about fifty percent prepared for that said meeting, uh, it, it, it may not be the appropriate venue for that type of discussion.
These guys may come, may wanna, may speak up tonight, who knows?
Okay, that being said, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting and we'll reconvene, uh, at seven o'clock.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Thank you.